Good morning, it's April 9th, time for the regular board meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attendance will show that all commissioners are present today?
When Jeff was chair, I could look over his shoulder and see the flag.
You can't look around again, you know. The first item we have is something new, we're gonna do approval of the agenda before each meeting, and that gives us a chance to take a look at the items that are on the agenda. If we have any additions, we'll announce those additions, as well as if we have any deletions, that way if there's anybody in the audience that is waiting for an item on the agenda, but it is gonna be scratched, that way they'll know that it'll be taken off the agenda. But the items that will be added will not be of significant nature, in that we wanna make sure that the public's aware of things we're gonna be voting on and major issues, but small things will be added at times. And Randy, I believe we're adding something on the consent agenda?
Yeah, one item from the out of Treasurer's Office, budgeted positions in the admin license center, the service center license center and a half in a Treasurer's Office.
Okay, so with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lenzmeyer? Second. Second by Commissioner Notch. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Motion passes. The next item we have is the public forum, is there anybody wishing to speak at the public forum this morning? Anyone wishing to speak at the public forum? Last chance to speak at the public forum. If not, we'll move to that consent agenda. Commissioners, before you, we have with the addition fourteen items. Are there any items in which commissioners would like to pull off the agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve those fourteen items on the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Commissioner Notch?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, second. Discussion on any of those? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All of those items are passed. The next item we have is soil and water conservation district. Gentlemen, come on up.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, and we'll have Dennis Pfeiffer over here and kind of go through our annual update.
Good morning, Dennis.
Good morning, and thank you, Board, for letting us come to your board meeting and share what we were up to in 2018. So it's Dennis Brooks, Administrator with the Stearns County SWCD, Chuck Opoff, Chair of the Board. Just a reminder to the commissioners that we follow the Stearns County Comprehensive Plan, and they have identified priority concerns, which includes impaired waters, source water protection, urban development, and we're slowly moving toward the comprehensive watershed management, the one watershed, one plan, way of managing across the watershed. And then we're also a non-regulatory voluntary assistance and have no taxing authority. So the 2018 annual update is on your spot in front of you. I'm gonna be giving a very high-level presentation, we have a lot of slides here, so I'll keep it high-level, and then if there's questions during or after, please ask us for additional details. One thing that the Stearns SWCD does every year is recognize the outstanding conservationist. This past year, we're in Dave Weller's Supervisor area, we recognized the Boat Family Farm, and they've done a lot of great things out on their farm, and hosted the annual breakfast on the farm in 2018. We also do a lot of communicating with our state legislators, and one of the important things, Board Supervisors at the local SWCD level, is to help encourage proper state and federal policy, and you can see a meeting with the full board, with former Representative Bob Knoblock, and also Paul Anderson. Also had an opportunity in 2018 to go to the National Association Conservation District's fly-in in DC, and pictured there is Curtis Elke, he was the acting Minnesota NRCS State Conservationist, Colin Peterson, Ian Cunningham, who's on the National Association Conservation District Board, and Doug Thomas with Bowser. We've been working on getting a new crop in Stearns County, it's called Kernza, intermediate wheat grass, and we had some of this planted with the assistance of Brandon Dingman, center in the photo, along with Jake Younger from the University of Minnesota for Evergreen. This planting was in the Cold Spring Wellhead Protection Area, and Kernza's very good at taking up nitrates, and it's got a very, very deep rooting system, and we're, bless you, we're excited to get this out there, and we're also gonna be hopefully sharing some more information next year with some projects going on. We have a cooperative weed management, we work in conjunction with the County Ag Inspector Bob Dunning, wild parsnip is one of the things we're trying to control, which is right in front of Bob there, as you can see, he's got long-sleeved shirts on, if you don't and you get exposed to it, you'll have scars for a long time. As I mentioned earlier, we're moving toward water-based planting, and it's the new way of managing water quality efforts in Minnesota. Currently, the North Fork of the Crowe has been completed as a plan, and we're working on the SOC, one watershed, one plan, I know Commissioner Notch has been very involved with that, along with Supervisor Opoff. Minnesota Ag Water Quality Certification Program is continuing to build steam across Minnesota, and we're fortunate to work with our Pope SWCD partners to get Representative Paul Anderson certified. Pictured with Paul is Holly Kabork, the Pope SWCD Manager, and Graham Pearson, our SWCD Water Quality Assessment Specialist, and up on top is Anderson Family Farms and Mark LaFave, along with the Anderson Brothers. And then in the lower right, we got Graham Pearson again, and then Mark Greve, a engineer in training, that is assisting farmers with any identified structural practices that need to be implemented before they can get certified, he helps with the technical assistance to get those projects implemented. Looking at our 2018 financial information, we have an operational budget, this is to keep the lights on, budget of about 2.1 million, about a million of that is Stearns County support, and the rest is state and local. One of the things when we're visiting with our state legislators is protecting our resources is a shared responsibility, and we really would like to see the state step up to the plate a little bit more, and Stearns County is one of the best-funded SWCDs by the county in the state of Minnesota, and they're actually pursuing taxing authority for other districts across the state, and that's something that in Stearns County, I think status quo would be perfectly fine. Continuing with the financial information, this is project payments to landowners, and we brought in about $5.4 million, this went to landowners to implement projects, everything from CRP to ag waste systems to erosion control projects. This is a demonstration of our ag waste systems. These are massive projects that require a lot of people, a lot of folks out there who have got to put together these large projects, it's called laser screen, it's ready to be used for about eleven hours. So what we think we have here in Stearns is an efficient conservation delivery model by working cooperatively with state agencies, federal partners, and outside organizations. The Stearns SWCD leverage is about $6 for every $1 received from Stearns County taxpayers. Technical assistance is provided at no cost to the landowners, they only cover a portion of the project cost. This keeps the local ag economy moving forward while protecting and restoring our natural resources. Here's a map showing where the projects occurred in 2018, and as you can see, they're located throughout the county, but often they're adjacent to streams and impaired waters where we need it to be doing the work. This graphic here just illustrates a wide variety of practices that were completed in 2018, in the upper right is an ag waste storage facility, and that's gonna help this farmer manage their manure and incorporating that manure when it needs to be applied on the fields. And then also a stream bank stabilization project in the lower right, and that helps stabilize the stream bank along the Sauk River. Looking at some additional accomplishments in 2018, we've done a lot of comprehensive nutrient management plans, and nutrient management planning, and you can see the number or amount, and also the Minnesota Buffer Law, we've been very busy on that, I have got another slide covering that down the road, but there was 154 plans completed for alternative practices, that's where they could reduce that 50-foot buffer to a lower or a more narrow width that still provided the water quality benefits. Ongoing accomplishments continued, and I won't get into a lot of detail here, but we have 58 water quality certified farms in Stearns County, and that's about 23,000 acres. We had a 2018 Soil Health Tour, and the attendees there, we visited a variety of farmers implementing cover crops and reduced tillage strategies to protect our resources and sustain their crop productivity. We had a farmer's fair with speakers and farmers sharing the information on how they conduct their business and grow crops using cover crops. We do a variety of education and outreach, starting at the upper left, we have the Area Two Envirothon, Chasm Radio, Frozen Fest, the Middle Sauk Water Festival, County Fee Lot Association Meeting, and then also the Soil Health Tour. We had an opportunity to identify some landowners that are doing some great things in the North Fork of the Crowe. McKnight Foundation hired Lexicon, a company out of California, to help do a story on the North Fork of the Crowe, and we found three farmers that were willing to share their story. One was Grant Anderson, and that's this particular slide, and also the Boat Family Farm, were also willing to share their story and some of the great things they're doing to protect our resources. And then also Roy and Sandy Lensing, and their son Kurt and daughter Leah, were also available to share what they're doing on their farms. We also were at the Central Minnesota Farm Show, this is a great opportunity to visit one-on-one with farmers in a very relaxed setting, and it's very worthwhile to be at a place like this. Also participated in the Shoreland Contractors Training, this is put on with Environmental Services Department. Contractors working within Shoreland are required to have certification and training every two years, and this is a great opportunity to get them there, along with the other folks that are involved with land use decisions. The West Central Technical Service Area is 12 SWCD area in west central Minnesota, and you can see the number of projects assisted by the team here, with Stearns County blazing the trail. The type of work that these folks do, they do a lot of site evaluations and designs, and then hopefully that results in construction assistance, and erosion control was the number one project practice type along with fee lots. We also have a discovery farm located in Stearns County, this is to look at edge-of-field monitoring to better understand agriculture's positive impacts on soil and water quality, and reducing negative impacts, also to better identify management practices that will improve farm profitability and environmental performance, and then provide science-based information on ag production and natural resource management. And this site is located on the Nicken at Terremyer Dairy Farm. In 2018, we had a private well testing, this was done with the Minnesota Department of Health, and typically we do it, we usually worked in the past with the Minnesota Department of Ag and just did nitrate, this was somewhat unique, where we also looked at arsenic and coliform, and you can see the results of those samples there, and folks that had problems were then provided information on how to solve their water quality problems. We do groundwater monitoring, we have approximately 40-plus wells with Minnesota DNR, this is to help monitor groundwater quantity levels throughout the county, and as you know, the Bonanza Valley area is an area that fluctuates dramatically, and we wanna make sure that we're pumping at a sustainable rate, and we assist the DNR with collecting that information. Ag BNP loans, these are low-interest loans administered by the Minnesota Department of Ag and underwritten by local banks here in central Minnesota, and they can be used for a variety of equipment, their portion of an ag waste system to help the landowner portion, and these have been in great demand recently because of the interest rates going up, these funds have been going out the door very quickly. We also receive a Farm Bill Assistance Partnership Grant, this is from a variety of state funding sources to help landowners that would like to do stuff for wildlife, such as wetlands, filters, and tree plantings, and you can see the acres planted there. This is the slide talking a little bit about the buffer compliance here in Stearns County, so there's been a lot of work done to get folks up to what they need for the Minnesota Buffer Law, and currently we're at about 98% compliant, and there was 404 acres of buffers installed, and if you compare what Benton County has, they had about 27 acres, so this is a huge workload, Ben, Ben Rulli in our office is the lead buffer compliance person, and provides a lot of technical assistance to landowners. So right now, we got about 72 landowners working on alternative practice plans, those are areas where we're achieving water quality benefits with a reduced or narrow width buffer. And then we've got 69 landowners agreeing to the alternative practice plans, which we'll be implementing, and we've been unable to contact five landowners, which with 12,000-plus parcels in Stearns County, that's we're really satisfied with the results.
Just wanna mention, first of all, I wanna commend you and the farmers on that, I mean 98% compliance is incredible, when you think about, you know, establishing those buffers, and I know it was a bit controversial for a good number of folks, but I think that there's an understanding, and of course, many of those farmers were doing those things even before we made the suggestion as well, so again, I really appreciate the work that's going on there.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a project protecting the Avon Hills. This is with Minnesota Land Trust, St. John's University, Environmental and Natural Resources Trust Fund, which is the LCCMR, and also Clean Water Land and Legacy. We're working with larger tracts of property out there where they're protecting the natural resource, the natural environment, and folks are giving up their development rights to keep that area less developed and protecting our resources. We also have a volunteer rain gauge network. There's about 12 folks throughout the county collecting data. And this is used by the Minnesota DNR State Climatology Office to help us identify precipitation trends. And we use this in our engineering practices to make sure that they're designed properly to handle the rainfall events. Looking at just a couple of projects, here's an erosion control project with a before and after. And you can see the amount of phosphorus per year that's being saved, 70 or 723 pounds and 851 tons per year. This is a stream bank stabilization project on the Mississippi River, Stearns County Park. And this has been a great project. Greg Berger actually was out there this spring, actually a couple of weeks ago, and had some photos of ice just laying right on top of that, those mats out there. So we're curious to see what it's going to look like when all the ice melts and the snow melts again. Another project here is the waste storage facility. And we do 10, 20 of these a year depending on the farmer participation. And it looks like this one did a great job of keeping a lot of the BOD, chemical oxygen demand, biological oxygen demand out of our surface waters, reducing phosphorus by 38 pounds and nitrogen 112 pounds per year. And of these projects, you can see there's a variety of partners. This one included the Stearns County SWCD, NRCS, and the West Central Technical Service Area. This is a monarch habitat project in the western part of the county. It's 17 acres of area that's being reestablished for monarch and pollinator habitat. And the funding for this came from Great River Green Union and the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Supervisor Dave Brinkman resigned and retired from the board this past year. And excellent supervisor for 15 years with the Stearns County SWCD. The board appointed Matt Bruett, who's in the audience today, as the new supervisor to carry out Dave Brinkman's remaining term. And the rest of the board is here, except for Arlen, who's down in the lower left. We have Chuck here beside me. Above him is Dave Weller, and he's in the audience. And also Tom Gregory, the provider of cookies. The West Central Technical Service Area has got Ross Reeffenberger, Lou Kirkunoff and Gary Borash. This is the team that we share across that 12-county area. And Ross is a professional engineer. We have our USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. We have an acting DC, Pat Galing, who is headquartered out of the Foley Benton SWCD office. He's with us here today in the audience. And we, he's acting, and we should be having a new NRCS DC onboard in May, is the word on the street. So we're excited to keep these people in the county, providing technical assistance and the leadership. Stearns County Board of Commissioners, there they are. Also included newly elected Commissioner Terrill Clark. And it is the foundation of the strength of the SWCD is the county board. And it's so important to recognize that. SWCD staff. And then I just want to let the commissioners know that we will be having a 70th anniversary tour sometime in June. I will be sending out, or one of my staff will be sending out a poll to identify some available dates because we really like to see all of the commissioners and county staff that are interested in what we do on that tour. So thank you. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, questions for Dennis?
What's that karza crop used for?
Karza, it's a relatively new crop. And right now, General Mills is exploring making products with it. And they're also using it in some of the breweries as a potential product there. And then it's also a good forage for livestock and straw. So there's multiple uses potentially out of that. We'll have more information to share later this year, but we are working on an LCCMR project with the AURI Ag Utilization Research Institute. And they're evaluating more products to be made with karza.
Other questions? I do have a couple. Just curious, with the legislature this year, is there anything in the session that we should be paying attention to as far as soil and water?
Yeah, there's several things. We were looking for base funding from the state of 14 million per year. And right now, in the past, they've taken some funds out of the Clean Water Fund. We'd rather see that come out of the general fund so that those clean water funds would be available for doing projects and practices in the county. And then also there was the taxing authority that they had as a status quo, a levy or a fee. That is something that they were pursuing. And our board's been very neutral in that because of the support that we received from you. But not every county's like Stearns. And there are some folks out there that would like to pursue their own taxing authority to get their capacity up to where they need it for their county. Those are the two big ones. And then just supporting the recommendations of the Clean Water Council and the Lassard-Sams Outdoor Heritage Council on the LCCMR.
And also of the 14 million, I did hear Paul Anderson on the radio this morning. And he said he thinks the most that the legislators are going to accept would be seven. They're going to cut us down to 7 million instead of the 14. So that's really going to hurt. That's going to hurt all the SWCDs across the state.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a follow-up to that, is that 7 million from the general fund and then the remainder will be coming out of Clean Water Legacy or is, would it be capped at that?
She thought it was, and thank you for the question. Paul Anderson thought it was going to come out of the legacy funding.
Thank you.
And then I just was had another question. I see some of the larger farms now have gone to sand for bedding and they're spreading that sand. Just looking long range, are there any implications of what possibly negative effects could happen with spreading that sand? Is there any issues with that as far as disturbing the soil?
I don't think it'd be huge if you spread that, you know, as a manure application and includes some sand. I don't see that as a huge concern.
But is it a quantity matter at all as far as continual dumping in one specific location or not?
No, I think if you put it on the same area all the time, if you have uniform application across your farm, you probably won't see, plus they recycle a lot of that, Chuck. Are you more familiar with sand bedding than I am probably, but?
Yeah, sure. Hello, my name is Matt Bruett. I'm the new supervisor in the board. But I would say that generally speaking, the amount of sand that's going out onto the fields is miniscule in comparison to the whole profile. And I don't think you're going to change, you know, a loam to a sand or a clay to a sand or something like that, or degrade the quality over time with that. And more and more, the people are starting to reclaim the sand in their bedding systems too. So that would be something I think that will become more common.
Just concerned about best practice.
Talked about groundwater monitoring. Other, I know out west, water is a huge controversial issue. And especially in California where some ag operators have been denied water and really turned the fields back into near desert. Is any states in the Midwest that groundwater is becoming an issue in terms of rationing, that sort of thing?
I think Nebraska has got some concerns and they've been moving into a more efficient cropping system. They've got drought tolerant corn that they're moving into. Takes less annual precipitation and water to produce yields. But that's, and then our Bonanza Valley is an area where we see extreme fluctuations when we're growing crops during the summer. Some of the wells that we look at can fluctuate 50 feet in elevation or depth when we're monitoring them.
I think in those areas that you're talking about, Lee, I think producers are starting to look at things a whole lot differently than they did before because they are concerned. You know, they're getting low-flow irrigation systems and they're starting to use more cover crops and no-till and issues like this that are helping with water management. And I think that's something you're going to see spreading more and more.
All right, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very quickly, I just want to also, Dennis, thank you, your staff, the Gregories, for the field trip, the learning experience that was given to some of our statewide conservation, environmental leaders. I thank them really getting a hands-on, close look at what is happening in our region, what the impacts are. I think it was eye-opening for a number of people. So just really want to thank you for making that time available.
Thank you. If I could just for a second, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, you know, I've been on the soil and water board now for a good 20 years. And boy, have I seen a lot of change in these 20 years. I mean, you think of the moleboard plow was really a high item when I first started. And, and you know, now we're going more to chisel plowing. Now we're seeing more organic farmers. We're seeing just a lot of changes, irrigation. And, and most of it is very positive, just as you had brought up about, about the buffers, the compliance. I mean, people do care. I mean, and, and that's really important. And, you know, I guess, do we still have concerns? Definitely. I mean, we see a lot of larger farmers out there. We see a lot of tree areas, groves and everything getting taken out. And that's always a concern. I mean, trees are a very valuable resource for all of us. And, but you know, with, with, with change comes growth. With growth, you know, always new, new things change in the horizon. And I think we have to all stay very positive. And, and like I said, the producers do care.
Cooperation's very important, so.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. You have a good day.
The next item we have on the agenda is a presentation about property at Big Fish Lake. Mary Schrammle, I believe you're on with that.
Hello. Very nice to see you all.
Sure.
I'd like to introduce Marcus Marsh, the author of the Wetland Act, and Attorney Jim Peters, an environmental specialist to help us with some of the ordinances. So thank you for having us. And I visited earlier with Janet in the back, who's going to help us with some of the technology as we put it up on our board. I handed each one of you, some of you weren't here yet, you should have a folder. And in that folder, you will find the presentation, which I will go through. And I just wanted to let you know ahead of time that everything that we do mention, we have the backup documentation for. We'll start with, before the excavation. We had a type 6 wetland, and that is the purpose for coming before you today. And I'm just going to start with these two pictures. It was very well vegetated with all wetland plants. Here's another picture of it. Impassable, completely a type 6 wetland. So I'll leave this up there as we get started here. You have pictures in your book. So the purpose of coming before the board today is to request that a destroyed type 6 wetland on the shore of Big Fish Lake, which is also one of the lake's tributaries, be required to be restored back to its original form and function. In 1923, the Platte Statute 505.02 subdivision 1 required that all these drainage ways, as shown on the USGS map, which I'll be showing you, had to be included in the plat. There are two areas in Sunset View, both lining up with the USGS map as part of the wetland systems on the east side of Big Fish Lake. On Thursday, January 28th, you have this in your packet as well. The Board of Adjustments, that Stearns County Board of Adjustment, Bill Schnatter came to the board to ask for determination of whether the second drainage way in this same plat was a township road because the township had put both drainage ways on their road list, even though neither fit not even one of their specifications, nor did they give any notice to any one of their actions. The determination by the county board at that time was that, no, it was only a drainage way. Both of these are listed in the same plat with the same description and the same dedication. The other one, and so it's right here in your notes on the bottom, that he came and asked the board, and he was clarifying setback. And because it was not a road, you can see that the house was built right up to the edge of the ravine. There is no setback. You determined it to be just a drainage way. The house is there, comes right up to the end. In fact, the walkout portion has an ingress window into the ravine. So you have that documentation. The DNR statewide standard 6120.3500, local governments must provide easements over natural drainage ways and ponding areas for management of stormwater and significant wetlands. Easements for drainage ways of width sufficient to accommodate anticipated stormwater runoff. They're preserved through dedication so that they can intercept pollutants before they reach the public waters. One in Sunset View is the 20-foot-wide swale we are asking for remediation on, and one is that 15-foot ravine. And the runoff, you all received the video of the runoff. Sauk River watershed did all the calculations, it's millions of gallons. It has run every year since the destruction. It sometimes runs three, four, or five times a year, depending on the spring thaw, depending on summer rainfall. We have many on video, we have many pictures. This is a still picture from the video you received. I can show it again if you'd like. Janet has it up on the computer ready. The running water goes right through the four-wheeler marks, through the bulldozed, unpermitted removal of a berm, ice berm. And then it flows out onto the lake and it's brown water all the way through. It is draining 20 acres of ag land, and that's per DNR study. In the summertime, on our beach, since we are right next to it, we are unable to use our beach. It is solid brown water, stained for quite a while. You cannot swim in it. We pay almost $9,000 in taxes. We can't go near the lake. It's all evidence, we have pictures and videos. Joe Fitzgerald of the Soil and Water, along with Shelley Benson of Stearns County, delineated this 20-foot-wide drainage swale as a type 6 wetland. In 1992, the Wetlands Act was enforced as authored by Representative Marcus Marsh. And Marcus is here today as requested by the board to confirm that all the actions by the township are clear violations of the Wetland Act. There was to be no draining, no altering, no net loss. The Wetland Act is based on Minnesota statutes 103A, B, E, F, and G. In addition, the act includes Minnesota chapters 116B and D. Marcus Marsh put us in contact with the authors of your Stearns County Water Comprehensive Plan. They also stated these township actions are in violation of the county comprehensive plan. Dr. Keith Knudsen, Dr. Sherry Cohen, Dr. Richard Anderson. The county was required to identify a high priority area under Minnesota statutes 103B.311. They identified shoreline wetlands for the highest protection. This is part of your comprehensive plan, which you are supposed to be following. The DNR has written several letters and completed a hydrological study of the shoreline wetland protection zone. They show this wetland was filtering 20 acres of ag land before its destruction. You have all those letters in there. I'll show you first the one from the county saying, yes, it is a type 6 wetland. You have that in your packet. Here's the first letter that came from Dale Homuth, who was... Here's the first letter that came from Dale Homuth, who was the DNR. And he also says he was going to charge them with the unauthorized cross-section of a public waters. It goes on to say that you receive letters from Kent Locasmo from the DNR. It's from several members of the DNR. And this particular one, it is mentioning that roads shall not be placed within the bluff and shore impact zones. And they reference other feasible alternatives exist. We have a beautiful DNR landing on the north end of the lake, three levels tarred. Beautiful. You have a third letter in your packet from Kent Locasmo. And Kent Locasmo says that restoration should occur. It clearly rests with the county. You are funded to do this. You do this on a constant basis for any regular citizen in the county. You have all that in your packet. In the clean water study on Big Fish Lake, you have this map in your packet. It also then shows you, the USGS map is overlaid with this, and it shows you that we are Area 9, inlet number 9. This is an inlet to the lake. It's not just a wetland. This is an inlet. And inlet number 5 is the ravine you saw. They are both shown clearly on the study that was conducted. Many agencies were part of that. Stearns County, Sauk River Watershed, PCA, they all were part of it. They labeled these as inlets to the lake. And you have that in your packet as well. Some of the actions that occurred. The township said they removed, oh, I'm sorry, I went down a little too far. There were no permits obtained by anyone to do any of the destruction. Ken Hanson of Collegeville Township actually put in writing to you that they kept the vegetation removable to a minimum. That was an outright lie. Here's his letter to you. Here are the telescopic boom trucks. They clear-cut every square inch of that area, every square inch. Even to today, there is no vegetation whatsoever anywhere in it. They used a bulldozer to remove the entire ice ridge. And then they did not report that to you. You have that in front of you in your packet. Here is that, the ice ridge that was bulldozed straight to the lake. The ice ridge continues onto our side of the property. I will show you some pictures. And our part of the ice ridge and wetland is still intact, and you can measure it. You can go out today and measure it. They have stated they removed less than 10 cubic yards. That was also a lie. They removed an area 20 feet wide, 10 foot in running distance, 5 foot high. That totals 37 cubic yards of fill that was removed from this wetland. The entire ice ridge was removed by a bulldozer, and you can still see our portion of the ice ridge is still intact. I also have from the EPA that ice ridges are part of the wetland. In fact, that they keep it from draining. They are part of the wetland. They are an entity of the wetland that make it so that it is not drained, which would be a violation. The only other change, there has been no other changes. Nothing has been taken care of, except for they tried to install what they called a stand pipe. This new culvert is deeper and larger than the previous one, and therefore is allowing more phosphorus runoff. And the phosphorus runoff was calculated by the Sauk River Watershed in volume and quantity. And all this is flowing direct to Big Fish Lake. Water tests show millions of gallons, high volumes of phosphorus. Interesting, they didn't get themselves a permit for a wetland impact, a continual wetland impact. They gave themselves a road replacement plan. They didn't replace the road. They impacted the wetland further. So the wetland was drained by removing the ice ridge. EPA has written it is part of the wetland. Wetland was altered by attempting to make it in a township road that does not meet, not even one township road specification. Absolutely no permits. Shelley tries to say it is now a type-1 wetland, which again is a violation because there is no net loss. Our Natural Resource Agency state that the purpose for the county's enforcement of the Wetland Act and the state statutes and rules and the comprehensive plan and your zoning ordinances are because they are the wetlands that do the most to maintain Minnesota's clean lakes and rivers. The entire state of Minnesota follows these laws. It is everyone's responsibility to protect our natural resources. Even the Attorney General's Office has given us over 69 pages of the laws to protect the shoreline wetland tributaries. If you would like copies, I can get those. We have terrible LJ blooms. I can show you those next. First, I want to show you the outcome. That's all we have. That's all that's left. There is not one single bit of vegetation in the entire area. It was bulldozed. It was clear-cut. This is today. I took this picture yesterday. All you have are the ruts from a four-wheeler going through a wetland. I showed you the video of it going through the stand pipe. It does not go over the top of a stand pipe. If you might picture a stand pipe, you would think it's holding water back. There are three large orifices on the side, letting it come through faster. And it's deeper in the ground. And that was their impact. So they're draining it faster. There is absolutely nothing that it drains into, which is another violation of the law. You have to list where's it draining to, and they didn't show that. And instead of anything possibly filtering it here, it zooms straight down over the bank and into the lake, which you saw in the previous picture. And we have terrible LJ blooms. And at the lake, if you look at a PCA study, which I can send you, the amount of phosphorus in our lake has doubled since this has occurred. So what we are asking for is simply, we are requesting a motion that this area be restored in form and function to the type-six wetland it originally started as. And I know you asked for Marcus Marsh, and so I will turn it over to Marcus Marsh now.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have to say something startling. A former politician is going to be very brief. I actually enjoyed the last presentation from the Soil and Water Conservation District because, to me, it is really saying, we've made a lot of progress. And I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but we've made a lot of progress since the first initial bill was introduced in 1989 for no-net laws. And I think that's a real contribution to lots and lots of people because one of the things I enjoyed working about was that bill. And it eventually became law in 1991 was we had such a good effort of across the board, everybody from farmers to people concerned about the environment to different entities of government. And it worked out well. I think we put together a good piece of legislation. I kind of joke that in the early years of the original bill, I don't know if any of you, maybe Commissioner Lenzmeyer remember the infamous, they called it House File 31, that I introduced because I got called everything from a visionary to a communist. And I figured that pretty well covered the gamut. But the whole thing started, just for a 30-second review, the whole idea of no-net laws started. I was meeting with DNR, Pollution Control, US Fish, Army Corps, right on down the line, groups, organizations. And the bottom line was, the simple fact was, there are a lot of actors in that whole picture. But there was such a mishmash of regulations and rules and laws that the resource was continuing to be lost. And I think I discovered, as I was working through that with all the different groups and organizations, that people really were concerned. They started to realize many Minnesota counties, when you look at the map, many Minnesota counties had in excess of 90% loss of wetlands. I remember one county stood out, had 99% loss of wetlands. And when you start looking at that kind of situation, you start to see problems with flooding. You see additional problems with groundwater protection, the filtration, protection of lakes and streams and rivers, as well as wildlife habitat. And so consequently, we pursued it. I think I got to learn the state quite well, places I didn't even know existed. But I think we put together a good bill and a good bipartisan, bipartisan support. And so when I look back, I was asked to testify in front of Judge Bolden, I think it was 26 years ago, about restoration in this issue. And if somebody told me then, 26 years from now, it'd be before the Stearns County Board, talking about the same issue, I obviously wouldn't have believed them. But I believe the way we crafted the Wetlands Protection Act, that the township did violate the law. The ice ridge is removed. The type-six wetland is gone. I think Mary's covered all the things very adequately, and I would hope that the county would step forward and restore the wetland because I think it's going to be a big improvement for water quality for Big Fish Lake. So that's about all my throat can go with the cold I have. So thank you for the opportunity to be before you and enjoyed chatting with a couple of you prior to the meeting. And thank you for your kind comments.
Thank you, Marcus, and thank you for your service over the years. Appreciate that.
The last picture I am putting up is the LJ blooms. They are right there out from the wetland, which is adjacent to our property. So this is what we have. There are $9,000 taxes. I have another one, too, from a longer distance, so you can see it is right out. The drainage comes right, it's under the, from the side there, and then it comes towards us. Here is it in a larger view, and here it is in a close-up. And you have both of these in your packet.
Hi. My name is Jim Peters, and I have to admit that I'm a lawyer. They ask you, what kind of lawyers are you, or what kind of lawyer is? Well, I've kind of come to think that people don't even like their own lawyer. That's why they put me last.
With good reason.
Exactly. But nevertheless, our country still allows lawyers to speak from time to time, so I'll take the opportunity. You got a great presentation from your Soil and Water people. I mean, that shows budget, staff, training, travel, accomplishments, good goals. You have a good ordinance. Your ordinance is current. You brought it up to date. Ordinance 439, it's consistent with the Minnesota rules. And so I think what you have here with this situation is an opportunity to add one more accomplishment. You have an opportunity to take care of this situation and hold it out as an example of a great project. You certainly have the resources to accomplish that. And, you know, like Marcus, the question I have, and I'm new to this thing, not because of my age, because I could have been part of it, but why is it coming to the board now? You know, why, after all these years, and why is staff not supporting a restoration here? What's going on? I just don't understand it. And so I got, you know, you hear the presentation from the Soil and Water people, and you think, my gosh, this, you look at the pictures, this is exactly the type of project that you guys would want to tackle. It would be the, you know, a poster child of a restoration plan. And so maybe it's the politics. Maybe it is that a township did it, you know? If it was a private property owner, would they be treated the same? You know, no. I mean, probably not. You know that you're going to meet with the township people later today, and privately you might hear somebody, yeah, well, can you believe that? They did that? Privately, people will admit that this was the wrong thing to do. And maybe it's because it's a lake access. Maybe that's the reason why this wetland destruction is kind of being looked at, you know, it's not being addressed. So I won't take up any more of your time. I thank you for allowing the property owner, she's very passionate about the issue. I just met her, but she's very well organized. She's got a file of all the materials, quite a good presentation. And it's hard for a property owner to do all that. It's a burden on a property owner to have to fight this kind of an issue all these years. And so thank you for hearing her out. That will at least help somewhat. I would, again, you know, hopefully, I think the county board has the authority, under your ordinance, Section 12, ordinance 439 enforcement, to issue an order directing restoration. And I think it'd be a good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we're taking information.
Right. Anything else that you'd like to add to that? We have already got about a half hour into this, but we're going to take some questions or any concerns, first of all, from the board as well. Questions from the board?
Mary, I'd like you to address, what was your lake shore like before that ice ridge was removed?
We had clean water. We had crystal-clear water, and we could swim at any time of the year. Never once did the runoff go into the lake. The area between our house and our neighbor's house, the Carlsons', was generally underwater. It was a type-six wetland. If the kids wanted to play, they had to walk across on the tarred road around the wetland to get to the neighbor's house. It was always underwater. And in the study of it being a type-six wetland, they found the surface water to be only 10 inches below ground level. And we had 100-year-old maple trees in there. You couldn't walk through it. It was that thick. We had an eagle's nest in there and a jack pine. Everything got torn out. No permits. It was underwater. It was water. It was a true type-six, beautiful wetland tributary to the lake.
In addition to that ice ridge being removed, was there fill put in to the ponding area?
Part of the area, part of the fill from the ice ridge did come back into the wetland slightly. And where the road, the tarred road that services the whole development, they made a large approach down into the wetland from there. That was all fill as well. And when you look at the pictures from when putting in the stand pipe, dump truck loads went into, if you look, it's simply that we are the wetland to the lake, then there's a tarred road, then additional wetland. And where they put that stand pipe in the additional wetland, which I can show you on the video, they have dump truck loads of fill going into there to put in that stand pipe. They have a bulldozer down in there. They're only working in the wetland, and their only permit was a road replacement.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I've been out there and looked at this. And I've never been accused of being a big environmentalist, but I'm also for clean water. And something that really has this type of effect, I'm against. And I personally would be in favor of restoring that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I know that we're solely taking information right now. One of the pieces I didn't say, and thank you for putting this together.
Sure.
Is, could you comment or provide us some information that relates to the litigation that you've gone through and what the outcome is? Because I just don't see that in here.
Right. In the very beginning, it was asked of everyone, what is it? And on the original plat, my parents owned it since '72, and now my husband and I, who have been married almost 40 years, own it. And in that time, the word "alley" was never on it. Never. And in fact, we went to Mynnie Torberg in the beginning, who was a surveyor in the area, and he said, the terminology clarified greatly in 1950. So the plotting from 1923 is accurate. It shows the marsh symbols. And suddenly, the township was putting it on their road list without any notification. So we asked for an injunction. We said, this needs to be discussed. You can't just do this. Where is your permits? There's even a letter from Jack Wimmer to them, saying, what is your plan? And at that junction, that's the one that Marcus spoke about, he explained, Bernie Boland was the judge, and we have the paperwork. We purchased it after that court case to say what is going, you know, to keep that on record. And Marcus clearly said, this is all a violation. The township said, oh, we're only going to take out two trees and just flatten the top. Then they went and did everything. And Bernie only lifted the injunction stating, should the township's actions cause damage, mitigation must occur. One other time, we went, the Sauk River Watershed has tried to help us all along. Wonderful people. They said, the problem is your township. to help us all along, wonderful people, they said, the problem is your township and they need to be out of there so that we can go in, we will fix it and so we asked, we tried to do a lawsuit to remove the township, the wrong claim was used and it was dismissed because of that, there was no court case, none, so we asked to say, well, let's, let us restate and file a different claim, that's the only thing that went to appeal, one question, can we restate a new claim, the answer was no, but because the judge opined and continued on, even though nothing went to court, she had to make it unpublished, so it is completely invalid for anyone to use as an unpublished answer, completely illegal, it's unpublished.
Other questions, concerns? Okay, I believe today we're just, it's an informational meeting, we will only take no action, we'll send it back with the administration and staff for further input and then we don't have the authority of which to make a decision today, we haven't been able to hear from the other sides as well as we would if it were to be a public hearing, so.
That was the discussion in January, do you know why, in fact, it was you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, that said it should be a public hearing, I was curious, why did it change to this?
Well, you gotta, I think it's actually to your benefit because these folks don't have the history on this that I do, you're asking them to vote blind, which is not prudent, so, yeah, so working on this some more is going to be a rehash for folks like you and I, but they need to know.
If I may, just on the accountability piece, which is kind of my big thing, you know, if this was not a township, if it was a private person, would it be handled differently and what's the perception to the public, you know, what's the perception to the constituents and to the people in the community, you know, they really want to see that townships and counties and officials are held to the same standard as private people, they don't want to feel that, you know, when you put the badge on, then suddenly you're above the law, that's a real bad precedent and it's not something that you're going to solve with one decision, but it's an incremental issue and it's, I think it's underlying this.
But we haven't heard it from the township?
No, and Mr. Chair, just going back to Commissioner Lenzmeyer's point, there's, this is pretty complicated and there are different jurisdictions and we're not talking about an individual person who doesn't have authority or obligations in the same way and so I think just because of all of that unpacking, it's important that we're bringing this information back to staff, having our county attorney's office look at it, among others, but clearly, I mean, it's an important issue, that's why you're back here again.
We watched the runoff already this spring and with the rain again tomorrow, we'll watch more mud of phosphorus run in the lake while we wait, can you tell us what we're waiting, when we'll wait till, when will we be waiting till?
Mr. Chair, since this, I mean, has a long history and it has been litigated and I know we all respect Ms. Trammell's request here and I'm glad that we have a specific request, but with that long history, I really think the board would need to know what they're getting into if they were to pass such a motion and I think that that's what you need to know is how that, how that would impact the county and the board, if they want to take that action because I don't think it's as simple as passing a motion.
Correct, and as I stated at the beginning of the meeting too, when we did an agenda review and adoption, this would be a significant decision and we weren't, we're not going to make a decision like this based on something was a presentation opposed or a hearing from the, at least from the township to have some input as well.
But I think you have, you know, we have a question we can ask of our, of our county attorney's office, what would be the consequences if we do this?
Okay.
I think anybody that hasn't been out there, I think it would be to your benefit to go actually physically take a look at it.
I agree, I'll get out there to take a look at it.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next item we have is Environmental Services, Shelley Benson.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, we just have a single item in front of you and Mark is here for that.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Board, I'll begin on page 102, item F1, this item is a request to authorize a May 7, 2019, public hearing for the large gathering license for the breakfast on the farm, under the large gathering ordinance, all new events are required to go through a public hearing process before a license can be issued by the Stearns County Auditor, the 2019 Breakfast on the Farm event is to be held at Mill Creek Dairy on June 1 in Main Prairie Township and Mill Creek Dairy is owned by the Gregory family, so Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you with the request that the board authorize a public hearing to be set for May 7, 2019.
Okay, we have a request for that public hearing about the breakfast on the farm.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions about that, it's a big event, let's hope for good weather, okay, with that, I'll call all the questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, who can be against it, we'll find out at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional items unless you have anything for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we could take a quick break.
All right.
Commissioners, would you like that, or should we just keep going?
I'm fine.
You could use a break, okay, I have a plane to catch, but let's make a quick one.
Oh, I'm fine, but, yep, why not?
Okay, we'll take a quick five minutes.
Okay, we are back from our recess. The next item we have on the agenda is Human Services Board. First item we have is Consent Agenda?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Melissa Huberty, Human Services Administrator, and I have two items on the consent, Human Services Consent Agenda. The first is Item G1 on Page 103, and it's just an update to the Joint Powers Agreement that we have with Benton County for a multidisciplinary child protection team. And Item G2 is the second item on Page 115, and it's just the Human Services Claims. Paid for services on behalf of clients, and I'm available for questions if you have it.
Okay, first of all, any questions about those two items? If not, a look for motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, second. Commissioner Notch, any discussion on those items? Notch, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next item.
Thank you. There's one regular board agenda item today, and it's Item H1 on Page 117, and we're going to do the update to the refugee resettlement and public assistance benefits presentation. The last time we were brought, this was brought to the board was in November of 2017, and this is just simply an update. I wanted to let you know that their PowerPoint and frequently asked questions will be on the website, probably at the moment I'm speaking, but perhaps just following this presentation. So I just wanted to go over what we're going to be reviewing today, and I'm going to have Janet move us to the next item. So first, we're going to be reviewing information regarding primary and secondary refugee resettlement in Stearns County, Stearns County role in administering public assistance programs. We'll be reviewing benefit dispersments by program area, the fiscal impact of refugee resettlement, to our knowledge, and public health services to newly arrived refugees. So first, it's always helpful to review what the definition of a refugee is. First, we want to make the comment that it's a person who's been forced to flee his or her homeland and is unable to return because she or he has experienced persecution, or has a well-founded fear of persecution based on race, religion, nationality, or a member of a social group or political opinion. Over 65 million people are displaced globally. This is the largest displacement crisis in history. We are still in that, and in 2019, this includes over 25 million refugees that need to be placed. I want to make the comment that this is available to less than one-half of 1% of all refugees. But resettlement provides a safe haven in a third country when no other options for safety are available. Resettlement to the United States is available only for those who demonstrate the greatest and most immediate need, and takes place only after rigorous vetting and medical processes. Each year, the President and the Congress set the number of refugees allowed into the United States, and this year, which began in October of 2018 and goes through September of 2019, that number was set at 30,000 people. It's important to note the difference between primary and secondary refugees as well. Primary refugees are where Stearns County is their first location, so they come directly from a different country and they go directly to Stearns County. Secondary refugees move to Stearns County from a different U.S. location. Refugee status in the United States is a distinct status. They're granted refugee status prior to coming to the United States after completion of an extensive screening. The pathway to citizenship is typically about five years, and folks who are at refugee status are protected from deportation excluding some instances of criminal activity if that would happen. Prior to arrival, refugees frequently stay in refugee camps for an average of 17 to 20 years, where living conditions are frequently unsafe and unhygienic, and I emphasize very unsafe, frequently. And again, I already noted that less than one-half of 1% of refugees are permanently resettled in any given year. The United States and Minnesota has a long history of being welcoming to immigrants. In the aftermath of World War II, the U.S. resettled hundreds of thousands of Europeans that were displaced from war, and throughout the 1980s and 1990s, the United States expanded its commitment to protect vulnerable and displaced persons by funding programs that help victims of gender-based violence and refugees who are fleeing genocide. U.S. funding helps ensure just the basic human needs for very vulnerable populations like unaccompanied children, survivors of human trafficking, and tortured survivors. And I wanted to make the comment, there is a difference between this wave of refugees and the post-Vietnam-era refugees. Some of the differences are just simply sheer numbers. We talked about, it's just the largest amount of folks who are needing to be displaced in the world, and we've had the largest migration since World War II. The other difference is that there are a lot of refugee resettlements that are now happening, not just in the urban areas, but in the rural areas and in smaller settlement areas, and so that has a big impact on communities. As a nation, we're also highly mobile, not just refugees, but everybody. So those issues, in addition to this particular group being frequently of Muslim faith and social media, all adds to the conversation about what's happening in our community. So we looked up the data, and we're providing new, just the updated data on how many refugees have come to different counties of Minnesota, and you can see it on the graph. Ramsey County in 2017 accepted the most refugees in total, at 455, and Hennepin County is second largest, at 239, and you can see Stearns County and Anoka are pretty close there, and then Candy Ojai and Olmsted County. This data comes from the Minnesota Department of Health, and you can see that Stearns County is not the only county receiving refugees. When we're looking at our numbers specifically for Stearns County, you can see that between 2016 and 2017, we had a dramatic reduction in the total number of primary refugees. I assume this is just because the total number of refugees that was set for the entire country has been going down over time in recent years. And you can take a look at the data there. A lot of folks ask questions about...
Excuse me, Melissa, did you have the number for 2018?
Actually, we don't have the number for 2018, but that'll be available soon. The way the data comes in, it sort of like comes in after the first quarter is when we get it, so we're close to getting those new numbers. Many questions are asked about what do primary refugees or refugees accept and are allowed in terms of fiscal support. Refugees receive a federal loan for travel expenses to the United States to be paid back within 42 months. They receive a one-time federal grant of $1,175 per person to cover initial expenses in the primary resettlement location, and it must be used within 90 days. So if folks are placed in a different part of the country and then they move here, the money doesn't come with them. They have to use the money where they're placed, and they have to use it within 90 days, and if they move, they still have to use the money within 90 days, and so Stearns County would not be receiving that. And then I want to make the comment that Lutheran Social Services of Minnesota receives $1,000 per individual to provide resettlement services. This is usually in the area of helping people find jobs and housing and all those other good things that people need, and these benefits are not part of the county budget. Realities of resettlement in the United States is that transitioning to life in the USA is very difficult for any refugee. Public assistance benefits do not cover basic living expenses, and so therefore, people need to put at a very high priority employment right away. And you will see, we're going to go over some data here pretty soon, and we maintain and still have the same, about the same numbers, where refugees in this community maintain a high level of employment because it's absolutely necessary. And also, community customs are challenging to understand at first. However, resettled refugees are eager to give back to the community and country to which has welcomed them, and they make significant economic and cultural contributions to the communities. Newly arrived refugees have been the driving force behind the rejuvenation of many cities across the United States, and they're employed at a very high rate in our community and across the country. They help create jobs, and they pay taxes. So despite challenges, refugees are resilient folks, succeed in employment, many manage the stresses well, and learn independent navigation of their community to which they're placed. So in summary of this part, refugees are people who have fled horrific and dangerous conditions, and they're usually from war-torn countries. They mostly arrive in Stearns County as secondary refugees to be reunited and supported by family and friends, and refugees are eligible residents for public assistance benefits, the same as any other lawful resident. So let's talk for a minute about Stearns County role in delivering federal and state financial benefits. We often liken this to a delivery truck. The Stearns County Board has a high level of responsibility for eligibility determination for benefits, but no authority over benefit design, benefit amount, or eligibility criteria. And we've used this as a delivery truck analogy. When you order something online, the delivery truck has a huge responsibility to pick up your product and ensure it gets to the right destination in a timely fashion. If there are concerns with the product, those concerns are not brought to the delivery truck company, because the delivery truck company does not have anything to say about the quality of your product, the price, or whether the product should have been created in the first place, and the companies make those decisions. And much like that, when it comes to the delivery of federal and state benefits to the residents of Stearns County, the county operates in a very similar manner to a delivery truck. The county has a huge responsibility to determine the eligibility of a recipient, assure the appropriate benefit gets to the right person, and the county has no authority to create the benefit, change the eligibility criteria or the benefit set, or determine whether or not people should have been eligible for the benefit in the first place. So we've broken this out by federally funded programs, state-funded programs, and county-funded programs. The federal and state-funded programs is not an exhaustive list, but it gives a good indicator of a good chunk of the services, and then I'm going to go into detail on the county-funded programs. In looking at the next slide, you can see that there's a pie chart which really indicates the benefits issued in Stearns County in one month. We took December of 2017 because it's a good indicator of any month of the year, and it's a pie graph of all benefits issued during that period. In one month of all Stearns County administered dispersments, nearly 97% of benefits issued were funded through the federal government. 3% about were state-funded benefits, and less than 1% are county-funded. And when you look at that pie chart, we've reviewed this at the board in a number of years. When you're looking at that 97%, we're going to go into a little bit of detail on that, but essentially what that is is healthcare. When we talk about where all of our taxpayer dollars are going, nearly all of them are going for healthcare, and the biggest chunk of that pie is generally for nursing facility placements. So many of us who are born and raised here, we divest our money, and when people age or our loved ones age, and the next thing you know, taxpayers are paying for healthcare, and we're paying for nursing facility placements. So with that, I'm going to have Janet go through some of the federal program benefits provided in Stearns County and the state ones.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So as you can see on here in list of descending order, as Melissa indicated, medical assistance is by far the largest expenditure, and that is a federal program. It's about 92% when we break that down. Medical assistance is Minnesota's largest public assistance healthcare insurance, and it is the largest purchaser of services made on behalf of eligible residents. And what this means is that is not income to people directly. Those expenditures, those services are purchased on behalf of people, and those purchases are made to and/or from clinics, pharmacies, rehab facilities, wheelchair fixes, those are some of the examples, including expenditures made on behalf of an individual's monthly premium.
Excuse me, let me just interrupt. Does this, expenditures include the VA, because it's federal funding? Do you know if this includes the VA?
VA benefits typically are a different benefit set, and while some folks who are receiving VA benefits may also be eligible for additional kinds of benefits, the likelihood that those two sets cross over would be very unusual. And so food support or supplemental nutrition assistance program is the next highest at 5%, and this program helps working families and adults supplement their household food budget. Any monthly dispersment does not cover even a single adult's individual food needs for that month. For example, on average, an elderly person who would be receiving food support would potentially receive around $12 a month. MFPIP, which is the Minnesota Family Investment Program, helps family with children's meet basic needs while they are moving towards stability through work. And then last, at one-tenth of a percent, is the Refugee Cash Assistance Program that Melissa described earlier, and everything is bigger than Refugee Cash Assistance. In addition to that, for Refugee Cash Assistance, folks are only eligible to receive that for the first eight months, and then they're moving on to work, or as also indicated, as any other lawful resident can apply for public assistance. A little bit more about medical assistance, because it is by far the largest expenditure of services on behalf of our individuals. Medical assistance, again, is the largest healthcare insurance. This is not Medicare. Medicare is for over 65, typically retired persons, and it's that percentage of your paycheck that has been paid into Medicare benefits while you have been working. Medical assistance, again, is the largest percentage of benefits that we administer on behalf of the federal and state government. And in the Affordable Care Act, Importability Act of 2010, effectively expanded healthcare for adults and children. In Stearns County, that meant about an additional 9% of our residents were able to be covered through healthcare. Additional programs, these are the state program benefits. These are not federally funded programs. Group residential housing is actually now renamed Housing Support Services. Group residential housing aims to reduce and prevent people from living in institutions and becoming homeless. And as you can see, it's about 53% of the expenditures that were made in December via state programs. Again, the Minnesota Family Investment Program is helping parents move to financial stability through work. It's about 28% of expenditures of the state program benefits issued in Stearns County. General assistance is similar to MFPIP for families. It provides money for people who can't work enough to support themselves and whose income and resources might be very low as a result of not being able to work. Minnesota Supplemental Aid, again, is a state program that supplements, but is not intended to cover an entire household budget. Primarily, that is used for food. So as you can see, MFPIP, the Minnesota Family Investment Program, is working in Stearns County. Fully 72% of our MFPIP recipients are still working three years after they've stopped receiving benefits. 78% remain successful after that three-year exit time, and that, as you can see here, our Somali families are working at an even higher rate than our general population in Stearns County.
So I'm going to talk about the two areas where we do have county levy dollars that support, that are just areas that we have county-supported dollars going through. This is not specifically to refugees, but may impact that population to some extent. And they are in the two areas of interpreter services, which is mandated by the 1964 Civil Rights Act, and in the area of public health coordination of refugee health assessments, which is mandated by the Minnesota Department of Health for preventing and controlling communicable diseases. So on the next slide, you can see where all of our interpreter services are used for, the different types of languages. While Somali is the most common interpreter language service requested, there are 15 other languages that are requested and provided. It's also important to note that many people who require interpreters are actually United States citizens. So people live here, and they are citizens here, and they don't necessarily have great command of the English language. You'll see there's 286 English speakers who are using interpreters as well, and we believe that's related to illiteracy. And also, as you probably know, the rules are complicated, and so even in English, they are very complicated. In terms of the county levy dollar for interpreter services, actually, between 2016 and 2017, the total amount that we're paying out of the county tax levy has actually gone down, and that decrease is a result of increased reimbursement, and we're using more bilingual staff, so the more diverse our workforce is, the better for us. The second thing up there is public health coordination of refugee health assessments. While in refugee camps or urban non-camp settings, access to healthcare varies by location. Health assessments are required pre-departure. Once a refugee is scheduled to travel to a primary location, the resettlement agency notifies the Minnesota Department of Health and the local public health authority in the area, and screening for health conditions of public health significance can make a refugee ineligible for transport to the United States. So this pre-screening is used to treat infections and illnesses, and we also complete, the federal government, I assume, completes recommended age-appropriate immunizations. Additional testing is done to check for these illnesses and diseases after arrival and for completing, again, those additional age-related immunizations that are necessary.
Melissa, has that been a challenge?
For us, it hasn't been, because we don't do it. But once folks arrive here, then it's our, our Public Health Division does do that, and we have a varying amount of individuals that are seen, and the more bilingual staff we have, that helps. So some of our numbers have gone down over the years because we have had more bilingual staff available. But non-infectious tuberculosis is found in about 21% of refugees. Infectious cases of TB are extremely rare, and if this occurs, Public Health provides direct observed therapy to assure the infection is eliminated. You may be aware, and we will be coming back to the board to talk about this soon, we're piloting in our Public Health Division a very highly innovative video direct observed therapy program. We're one of the first in the state to do this, and that actually also keeps our costs down, so that we can actually watch folks taking their medications on monitor in those cases where it's acceptable to do that, and that's helpful for us. Because refugees are screened for infectious tuberculosis overseas, nearly all of those were latent TB infections, which is not contagious. Individuals who test positive for latent TB infection are referred to the local public health or a primary care provider to receive this treatment, and the few who are identified with active TB disease are referred to the public health, which is doing the direct observed therapy, which I mentioned previously. Parasite infections are found in about 21% of refugees, but that is easily treated. And then in terms of hepatitis B infection, most refugees who test positive for that were infected at birth, as the most common transmission is between mother and child. Those with chronic hepatitis B infection are at increased risk of liver cirrhosis and cancer. About 4% of refugees test positive for hepatitis B infection, with the majority of those coming from Southeast Asia. Hepatitis B is a vaccine-preventable disease, and many refugees, as well as individuals born in the United States, are immune to this virus through vaccination. So just want to make a note that some of these services are billed through medical assistance for reimbursement as well. So overall, our costs between 2016 and 2017, they went up in terms of public health coordination and refugee assessments. Unfortunately, we had one of our bilingual staff move on, and that makes a direct connection with our budget overall. So we're looking at trying to engage those different populations as well to help with those levy, tax levy costs. In summary, there are no county funds budgeted for refugee resettlement-specific programs. Refugees contribute to the community workforce and are employed at a very high rate. Refugees bring valuable contributions to our communities, including an eagerness to work and economic strength as consumers and taxpayers. The Minnesota Chamber of Commerce estimated the lifetime earnings of immigrants to Minnesota overall as 659 billion, and the state and local taxes paid annually by immigrants is estimated to be about 793 million. Refugees are eligible also to apply for any financial assistance program available to the general public. County services provided to support the refugee community are mandated services through the Civil Rights Act, when it comes, when it is in terms of interpreters, and through the Minnesota Department of Health for the coordination of health assessments to ensure prevention of communicable diseases. Public health departments and community partners work toward the goal of helping all people in the communities obtain and maintain the highest level of health, and evidence shows that healthy people are more productive citizens and contribute to the good of the community. So it's the sense of when we bring everybody up, everybody's brought up. And with that, that is the update we have for the board, and we're available for questions.
Questions for Melissa? No questions? Okay, well, I appreciate the presentation today. One thing, I know there were concerns about the interpreters and the cost of interpreters, but also now with more people getting into workforce that are bilingual, that's actually helped considerably so, yeah?
Yes, that's wonderful. It's good for services.
I just have to ask this, because I just caught it when you were mentioning the statistics. I think you said the state, the immigration statistics you mentioned? But there's a difference between immigration and refugees, right?
Correct.
So there's not a specific statistic defining refugee, what the statistic you mentioned was immigrants?
Refugees, or with the overall consumerism, it was, that data was from the Chamber of Commerce, and it was on immigrants, the bigger population of folks. What we do, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, know about refugees specifically, though, is because they come from these horrific situations, their number-one concern is employment when they get to the new country. They're, you know, they're even more grateful than the general immigrant population, is my understanding.
That's why I bring it up, because I'm wondering if that statistic would actually be hype if they separated that, if that statistic would actually show a bump up.
Commissioner Clark? Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I thought the employment rates and the sustained employment is huge, especially for a group of people who have been through so much. And having worked at the Technical and Community College, the students that I worked with, wow, I mean, they were highly motivated, their families were working hard, and it looks like we've got data to be reinforcing that. So thank you.
Thank you much.
All right, thank you.
The next item we have on the agenda is Public Works. Good timing, Jody.
Good morning, Jody Tyke, County Engineer.
Good morning.
My first item today begins on Page 118 of your agenda packets, and in your blue folders, you should have a bid summary. We opened bids last Thursday, so it was after the submittal of the agenda items. This is a ground-in edeline striping, white reflective striping contract. I'm asking the board to award the contract to Century Fence. They had a grand total bid of $398,936.3, which is just over 5% over the engineer's estimate. However, we do have federal funds available to cover 90% of these costs. The remaining 10% will come out of our striping budget.
Okay. Motion to approve that?
I'll move it.
Commissioner Clark, second.
Second.
Commissioner Notch, discussion on it at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You've got your stripes.
My second item is on Page 121 in your agenda packets. I'm asking the board to authorize advertising for bids for CP 004-019-092, and this is the roundabout at the County Road 4 and 120 intersection. There's a little bit of grading work, obviously, in each direction to accommodate that roundabout. Asking the board to approve a bid opening date of May 16, 2019.
Motion to approve that bid? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Second.
Commissioner Clark, discussion on that bid? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I have no miscellaneous unless the board has anything for me.
Question for Jody. Commissioner Mergon.
Jody, the projects that are scheduled for this year, do you have a timeframe somewhere for each one of them individually or not, when they're projected to start?
If you're looking at the resurfacing, the large contract that we have let, it varies by project. Obviously, if you drive County Road 75 between St. Joseph and White Park, you've seen a significant amount of work. I know there's probably some concern about the weather forecast. They decided to move forward with getting that temporary traffic control set up, because although next week there's rain in the forecast, they can begin the milling in the rain. So that project will be starting, well, it's started right now, obviously, it's impacting traffic, they're doing some minor grading work, but that will be starting next week. The resurfacing, we're looking at probably mid-June to be starting, and that will be going all summer. There's a lot of resurfacing on that contract. County Road 120 and 4 roundabout, we're guessing, well, our anticipated start date is about mid-June, and that will take the whole summer, of course. mid-June, and that will take the whole summer, of course.
Jody, with that project, what do you anticipate that being shut? How long will that be shut down?
It will be the whole summer.
That intersection will be shut down?
Yes. And there'll be a posted detour for that.
But you don't have anywhere where it's listed all the other projects, what date they're intended to be started or anything like that?
Well, and right now, the resurfacing, like I said, has a significant number of roads on it, and we don't have that anticipated schedule from the contractor specifically. I do know that they're going to start in the Holding Ford area when they start. We've got a couple of roads up there, County Roads 52 and 151, because they have a little bit of finishing work to do up in Holding Ford from the contract last year as well. So that would probably be about mid-June while they'd be starting in the Holding Ford area. We don't know exactly, but the estimated progression then would be down in the main Prairie Township Kimball area, and then they would be moving west from there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to see some growing pains with, at resurfacing and that roundabout as far as closures and traffic. I'm sure we'll have to deal with that, and people will have to get into a pattern that's going to be, you know, acceptable for them, and we'll get through it.
It certainly will be inconvenient, and the summer will probably be long, but it will be worth it when it's done.
We're hoping, yep.
And just say, I think, to perhaps Commissioner Mergan's question, you do a great job of updating people, not just on the website, but people can sign up for updates about when this is happening, about how to go around it. And I know last year, I personally really appreciate that because we had a couple of projects that really were pretty big impacts.
Yeah.
Thank you with that, Jody. Other questions for Jody? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you much.
Thank you, Jody.
And you're staying for the other meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you in a bit. That brings us to issues by Commissioner, I believe. I'll start at that end. Randy?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Notch?
I have nothing.
I know nothing.
Nothing at all? Oh, wow. Mike? Carol?
I don't want to hold you up.
Well...
Hope you have a good vacation. You are hard. Have a good vacation.
I have nothing.
And I have nothing, other than, yeah. Otherwise, spring is springing, except for tomorrow's weather doesn't look good.
Yesterday was a great day.
Yesterday was a very good day. With that, let's hope for more good weather in Stearns County. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, second?
Second.
Commissioner Mergan? No, I don't think we'll have any argument. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.